Weekend at Burns.
Weekend at Burns, it's about a dead guy, two guys, it's comedy. And they take a dead guy and everyone thinks he's still alive and they walk around.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was thinking about the book that I read and it's very disheartening. It was about with this guy who was gonna die.
Can everybody please take their seats? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the regular board meeting Monday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. To order, please rise.
We'd like to have a moment of silence for eight firefighters across the U.S. that lost their lives this past month, then I'll pray. God, we thank you for those that have chosen to serve others and we thank you for those that have made a sacrifice for others. Lord, we pray that you will watch over them for eternity, that you be the families, those have lost a loved one, and just make your presence and your comfort known. Lord, we ask for protection for all the firefighters here in Benita, that you'll surround them and keep them safe and watch over them and their families, all the administrators and those who lead. We thank you, Lord, that we live in a country where we can gather and to express ourselves and enjoy the freedom we have. Just watch over and guide us, it's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There any public comment on agenda items this evening? Seeing none, I need an approval for the October tenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes and motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion for the October twenty twenty-two incurred expenditures and ACH payments, the acknowledgement of financial report, acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts and POs over ten thousand dollars.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion for the disposal report.
So moved.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner's business. Commissioner Murphy?
After this election, I would like to thank all the supporters who volunteered to help out. You did a great job, thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everybody for their help in this election. It didn't turn out the way I expected, but I just wanna let everybody know what kinda great boards you have up here. I've been lucky to be up here for eight and a half years. They're tremendous people, they're my friends, they have your interest and the citizens of this district in their minds all the time. They do a great, great job. And then we come down to the chief. I mean, I've been involved in the fire department over forty years and I've never seen a chief better than this man. My wife calls him a genius, I wouldn't do that, though. But he is absolutely incredible. He knows more about anything you wanna know than anybody I have ever met in my life. He just can't grow hair.
We can't, but we can't go for her judgment, she married you, so.
The staff, the girls, the everybody in the offices, they're my family, too. They take care of me like I was somebody important and I'm not. I love them as just, as my family, they're just terrific to me, anything I need, anytime, they're there for me. The deputy chiefs, the assistant chief, they're my brothers. They back me up, I back them up, it's just a family. And you guys, the guys in the back row right there, you're my brothers, you did everything you could to help me, anytime I needed it, and God bless you, you're the best there is. I've never seen a department as good as you guys, believe me. And the people, I just wanna thank you for having my time here and I really appreciate it. It's been an honor and a pleasure to be part of this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry, that was very, very well said. And we're gonna miss you. Chief, God rest his soul, Carl, it went during Irma. One of the problems, I forgot to ask you last month, but one of the problems that you all had was communications. How was it this time?
This time it was great. The city itself had some radios and we got on the same frequency and when they fell short, we did have, we do have about twelve extra radios, so we did give it to some of the, to the, to the city staff when they were staying here. And we had, I think, seven staff from the city here staying with us during the hurricane itself.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd just like to say congratulations to Commissioner Murphy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Casilla, we're gonna miss you and I know you'll never be far away, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Chief, I was gonna ask you, I don't know if you're gonna address it in your section, but I wanted to talk to you about how the hurricane affected our budget.
I got it in my, if you want, an hour, if I can do it during my.
During your thing's fine, thank you.
I'm gonna echo that. Congratulations, Commissioner Murphy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Larry, for the eight and a half years. We're gonna miss you. Another, another thing I'd just like to say something about briefly was how awesome Tunnel to Towers is. You know, I'm sure you're probably gonna say something in your report about them, but I was here, Greg was unloading all that material and one of the board members for Tunnel to Towers, I was with Nicole and we were from the same neighborhood, we grew up in the same neighborhood in New York, so it was like old home week. But it was just absolute, absolutely just awesome, what they did and how organized and how everything, everything was like a well-oiled machine and I think that we were very, very blessed to have them come here and help us out.
They, by the way, Chief, Chairman, they were, there were fifteen of them that arrived unexpectedly at the American Legion to help clean up and everything was wonderful.
I don't think they're done yet, they still got more stuff coming down for us, but I tell you, they were unbelievable, unbelievable group of people.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Phoenix Awards.
I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Mann.
Thank you. This department gives out an award called the Phoenix, the Phoenix representing rising from the ashes. We give it out to crews or individuals who successfully revived somebody who's in cardiac arrest. So on this call, this call happened eight months ago, the gentleman who was the unfortunate patient that took ill, wanted to be here and then had a family obligation they couldn't miss, so they couldn't be here unfortunately, but spoke to him and thanked you with all his heart. Gratitude is unbelievable from the family, so from me to you, thank you from him. This call started out as a chest pain call, so they get there, they get to the scene, just to go over it real quick. The crew got there, as they were loading the patient into the ambulance, he went into cardiac arrest. So this patient went into three different rhythms, which is really bad, and each rhythm we had to treat different. So the first rhythm was ventricular tachycardia, which means that his ventricles were beating so fast that he didn't have a pulse. So Lieutenant Zamora and his crew shocked the patient and got him into a ventricular tachycardia with a pulse, which if you don't treat right is very dangerous. It's one of the most dangerous rhythms that we treat. We have to shock that pulse and that rhythm within milliseconds. And if you don't, you can actually kill that person. And they did, they did it perfectly. So they transferred that rhythm into a viable rhythm, it was called a systole with an arrhythmia, which is stable, and they were able to stabilize that patient with that kind of rhythm and save that guy's life. So that's why we're here tonight. Congratulations. So we're gonna bring you up one at a time, Lieutenant Zamora. Firefighter Schmidt. This is Lieutenant Zamora's fourth Phoenix Award. This is firefighter Schmidt's fourth Phoenix Award. Firefighter Espinol. This is firefighter Espinol's first award. And just to recognize from Lee County EMS, they were on scene as well, paramedic Mariana Molina and EMT Derek Maxwell, who couldn't be here tonight. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Stoll. Nice work. Chief?
Yes, I do have some promotions and five-year and ten-year pins to give out. First of all, I'll do the promotion of Lieutenant Eric Del Pozo. One of our recent promotions when we were doing some growing, so he got promoted into lieutenant, he's doing a real good job for us. He's part of our USAR team, he got deployed, you know, one of those great, great lieutenants that we have, he's also our FTO, and you know, anytime it's ever asked of him, you know, Lieutenant Del Pozo does whatever he's asked.
Congratulations.
Deputy Chief Schmidt couldn't be here tonight, so I'd like to congratulate and promote Jason Brode to Assistant Chief. And again, this was back in May and some things have happened, he was out for a little while, so I'd like to, no one's here to pin him, so I'll pin it, my guess. The next is the five-year promotion, or five-year years of service, I'd like to bring them up one at a time. I'll bring them all up and I'll give them up, so Jordan Green, Sean here, Linnahan? Curtis Meyer? Robert Millhouse? L.C. Jamie, Sminer, here? Jordan's not here, Enrique? April Stephery? You know, five years ago, we hired these, these fine individuals and they progressed up through, you know, doing their driver engineer, doing their acting lieutenant, and I'd like to congratulate them all for five, for completing five years of service. The next one, the next one's up is for the ten-year service. We've got Austin Bodett, I seen him out here. Calvin Payne? And then Eric Del Pozo.
Very little.
Is that it, Joe, and no one else? Again, these guys, these all were hired ten years ago, and if you remember, ten years ago, we hired them in anticipation of us going transport and anticipation of opening Station Seven in the near future, so congratulations to each of them. Of all people, you with the camera?
Congratulations.
And that's it.
Take a brief recess if everybody, anybody would like to not stay for the rest of the meeting and cut loose, otherwise you're welcome to stay, but we'll take a couple of minutes if anybody wants to take off.
Hold on, maybe not.
Yeah, well, we always, a lot of these people were here just for the awards and the presentation. We've only got a few for them. Next item on the agenda is old business. Anybody got any old business that we need to talk about? Seems like we forgot about everything after Ian came through.
Yeah, exactly. He took everything away.
I got one thing, anything going on with the station roof and the, anything come back? I know it's been with everything going on.
No, we've had a lot going on and nothing's really come back.
I just, I didn't think so, but I'm just curious.
We did remove the light pole, there was a light pole that I'll say was kinda in the way at Station Two and that seemed to have helped the issue with the truck coming in and out of Station Two, but we're still exploring the aspect of widening the driveway a little bit in that back.
Anybody got any new business, excuse me, anybody got any new business?
We do have two, two things on the agenda for the new business.
I'm requesting a paid vacation for a couple of years, anybody?
I know we have two things on the agenda, I just thought it was something, anybody else had? We need a motion for the, I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I was requesting a paid vacation for a couple of years.
I knew I should've just ignored you like I did. We need a motion for the waiver of the inspection fees, I believe, for Hurricane.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if everybody's had a chance to look over the board meeting dates for twenty twenty-three, the only question I had is because of nine eleven, we moved it to nine twelve?
Yes.
On a Tuesday?
Yes.
Instead of doing the morning?
Because we'll have our ceremony at Station One on September eleventh.
Okay. I didn't find anything, anybody, everybody okay with those dates?
Yep.
Okay, we need a motion to approve those minute, those meetings?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're up again, Chief.
Here we go. Just a few things to let everybody know. The towers, the tunnels to towers, they were here all last month, they are still here. Another crew came in today, as Commissioner Slack has said, the crew came in on November the seventh and they spent a majority of their time at, at the American Legion and then they were doing some other work in Fort Myers. So they are still coming and going throughout the whole, this whole, the rest of this month and they are going to have a big giveaway on the tenth, they're bringing down some toys and stuff for the tenth of December. So they're still in town, I just got a call from one of the head guys, Tommy O'Connor, he's here now with his brother Danny and a few other guys still doing some work in the area, so great organization. Very thankful for what we've done for them, what the community has done for them. I know the Hyatt have given them a couple discounted rates and some Airbnbs have given them discounted rates, so great organization, you know, we've got a connection now, if we ever need anything, if, if we ever go to New York or they come back, they're more than willing to help us with anything we need. Another thing coming up?
Chief, just a recommendation, I think it would be really nice if you wrote a letter to him, Siller.
Yep, I will do that.
Several of those guys have condos and houses here that were damaged, too.
Yes.
They had, several of them had vacation places here.
And, yeah, they do, and the positive is when they came down, you know, their, their first, first order of business was first responders and veterans, their homes that were damaged, where they needed, you know, stuff torn out of it or if they needed generators, I know a couple of our firefighters needed generators and they were nice enough to give them the generators that they needed and some different equipment, so. And this is all stuff that they either, A, purchased on the way down from New York, they came down with four rider trucks full, or penski trucks, I'm sorry, full of stuff, whether it's anything from toilet paper to generators to paper towels to Makita saws to wheel barrels and shovels, you know, so they brought four truckloads.
You had to get out of their way because they were moving so fast.
Yes. So, yep, they're still in town and I'll, and I'll keep everybody apprised of things that they are doing. The other thing that's going on right now is our extrication team, we've got a group of about ten guys that are going to compete in the state of Florida international type thing, it's over in Miami, it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Team of eight are just going over with two alternates, so they're going over and we'll let you know how they do on the next board meeting. Station Twenty-seven, as I've talked to a few of you, we're still in negotiation with Station Twenty-seven, we're getting closer on figuring out, she is at the point now where she's either gonna sell or she's going to try and rebuild the restaurant, so we're still talking to her, hopefully I'll have something for you next month. But we have pulled the plans, I've spoke to the fire marshal and assistant fire marshal, the plans have been pulled from the old Station Seven, I've talked to the city, John Dahmer at Community Development, just to resubmit them as, as is, because we're not gonna look to do anything greater than what we, what we had before, so. They have assured me that there should be no problems with, you know, just submitting those plans, the way they are. So we'll see how that goes, but we're hoping to submit them into this week or next week for those plans to get, so we can get moving on that. As to Commissioner Maturro's question about the cost of Hurricane Ian and a little bit of Hurricane Nicole, right now, to date, total cost that we've spent out so far is three hundred and seven thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-four. So that's what we spent so far. Of that, we feel that a hundred percent of that should be reimbursed by FEMA, because for the first sixty days for category B, which, of those category B, which is personnel and, and cost to that, is about two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, so we should get, I would say, all that reimbursed at a hundred percent. Some other things that, we got sand and we got some other equipment, you know, that's where the remainder of it comes in, the thirty, forty thousand dollars, hopefully that's done at a hundred percent.
Chief, did that take us to get from Irma, from the FEMA money, how long did that take? Over a year?
We still didn't get it all yet, did we?
I'm still waiting on a check.
You are, so it might be a while.
Yeah, maybe a while. On a positive note, if there can be a positive note, I think, I think that the government or at least the state and FEMA have changed the way that they, that they do things. We have a meeting tomorrow at nine o'clock to discuss some of these things, and I'll give you, for instance, Surfside, we gotten right about a year, so we've already been reimbursed for all of Surfside, and that was June.
Either way, it's, it's money in the bank, we know we're gonna get it.
I think we should make a motion to not have any more I-named storms.
Yeah, between Ivan and Irma and Ian now, so. So that's where we are on that, like I said, we have a, we have a nine AM conference call tomorrow with FEMA to kinda go over and make sure all our, you know, Is are dotted and our Ts are crossed and if they need any other supporting documentation. Just so we all know that sixty days is rapidly coming and that's where it's category B, which is mostly personnel cost, is done on November twenty-second, so.
Are they gonna extend it?
If they do extend it, it's gonna be very isolated, and what I mean by that is it will be isolated, like since we're not having any undue call volumes, anything like that, it will not be for us, they would isolate it like, let's say, to Fort Myers Beach where heavy damage or Sanibel, Pine Island, Captiva. So that's what the word we got now. Some more positives is that we have gotten a check, VFIS, our liability, insurance came down and looked at all the vehicles that were, all the staff vehicles that were exposed to water, that may have driven through the water before, after and during the storm. They have anticipated, I would say, some preventive maintenance and some anticipated some damage to them, and they've already cut us a check, we got those today to the tune of about thirty-four thousand dollars, with another fourteen thousand dollar check coming from Engine Twenty-seven that the fuel got contaminated, we're assuming from blowing water and rain and salt, where it did fourteen thousand dollars worth of internal damage to the motor, so they're waiting on that to come and look at it next week, it's in getting new lights put on it right now. So when they look at it, they'll cut us a check for about fourteen, anywhere from fourteen to sixteen thousand dollars to help with those repairs. We have received the thirty-two thousand, about thirty-three thousand dollars for the contents of Station Seven also, for the computers and stuff like that that was in Station Seven. And just as another note, I will be leaving tomorrow night, tomorrow night at six to seven thirty, there is a town hall meeting with us and FEMA at the First Presbyterian Church. The city's asked me to, to go and represent the fire department in case there's any questions on response and/or to help them answer any questions, so I'll be there from six to seven thirty at the First Presbyterian. After that, I'll be going to Ocala for a Florida Fire Chiefs Association meeting along with the Fallen Firefighter Memorial on Friday and I'll be back Friday, Friday afternoon. And then finally, I did speak to Pierce a couple of days ago, right now, our new truck, Engine Twenty-six, will be going on the line first week in January, we'll go up the middle to end of January for a tour and to look at it post-paint, and then we'll go back up, it's supposed to come off the line February fourteenth, so then we'll go up a week later, two weeks later after that for the final. So anticipate a March, mid-March for the truck to be here in Benita, then a month to outfit it, so I would say in service by no later than April, May. Just giving an update, and I have nothing else.
Thank you. And I think we're all in agreement of what a phenomenal job you did, Chief, running this whole.
Absolutely.
Dog and pony show that, you know, got thrown at you.
It's a team.
Your people, yeah, well, that's what I was gonna say, the team's only as good as the coach, and I think the team did a phenomenal job and it was because of your leadership and, and the help that you have sitting at that table.
Don't forget the captain, she was phenomenal.
Absolutely, no, I mean, the crew, our, we could put this, we could put this team up against anybody, anywhere, so I just wanted everybody to, you have a hundred percent appreciation from this board, you make us look good every day.
Yep. In the near future, I'll be making some recommendations as to, I guess you'd call honoring him and calling him out, I mean, a few people went above and beyond, so.
Yes, they did. I know we had talked about doing something, but I don't know, there's so many other people doing it, it's probably, well, we'll talk about that and have the update for next month.
Okay. Speaking of that, there is a, I'm sure you guys have seen it, there is a benefit concert coming up, December first at Hertz Arena.
There's also something in Riverside Park on the nineteenth of this month.
Okay.
I'm going to that one.
I think I will, too.
I already bought tickets to that. What's the one at Hertz?
The one at Hertz is gonna have Lynyrd Skynyrd, Ted Nugent, four or five other bands hosted by Jim Brewer, who used to be on Saturday Night Live.
The Beach Boys, they're not gonna have the Beach Boys?
The Beach Boys, I don't think are gonna make it, I think they had a prior engagement. We may be able to, I do have a discounted rate for that if anybody wants to go, so they do.
When is that?
December first.
Is it preferred seating or open seating?
They have floor seating, I think it's preferred seating, I don't think it's general admission, it's assigned seating.
Okay, thank you. We read the reports over in the pack, if anybody had any questions or anybody wants to make any comments on that. I guess, public comment, I don't have any cards, so.
Yeah. Of course, I was on the, at the beach here Hickory Boulevard four times with customers and one call was for blue bottle flies and I don't, this was on the corner. and one call was for blue bottle flies, and I don't, this was on the corner of McCofflin Boulevard and the swamp, you know, okay? And the only reason I'm mentioning this is because this is the first time I've ever seen blue bottle flies in a residence, and anyway, took care of that, but the, with a 99.5% success rate. But the problem is that the blue bottle flies are associated with carcasses, and I was wondering, I had gone up to the captain's, you know, roof on the top of the building just to make sure, but I didn't see any bodies out in the swamp. I didn't have any binoculars. But when they did the survey, did they survey the swamp area for any possible individuals that drowned? Does anybody know?
So the way we would do a survey like that, we would have to find out if someone was reported missing in that general vicinity, then we would use a helicopter or drones to, to attempt to locate them, but to my knowledge, to my knowledge, nobody was reported missing in that.
Okay, but you wouldn't go by necessarily by boat?
No, we'd either use, we could use a boat.
This is public comment, not public debate. We usually don't, we usually don't answer things that...
Anyway, I just thought I'd mention it.
Thank you.
Also, we're near prior Station 27, up the road across from Surfside, I have a customer there. The water, this had to be a tsunami, and that's what their structural engineers said. And the water, okay, I'm this high, and I looked at the elevator, I had to go in there, and the water was this big, and I am this tall. So that gives you an idea. Also, the, one of the pillars that supported the port, frontal porch, was completely undermined by the water. I mean, this was a devastating storm, and I am concerned about what the devastation is to the buildings, the condos, et cetera. I have one condo that I do, but I don't know if you've done the inspections right.
Alex, you wanna finish it up?
Okay, but that's a serious problem, and I just wanna take a few seconds about the urban search and rescue, the Surfside thing. I'm wondering, I saw the 60 Minutes program yesterday, I know I'm gonna go overboard, but this is, I think, important, but I'm concerned that from what I saw, they didn't talk about the soils underneath that Surfside tower building.
Okay, we're, we're gonna wrap this up.
Okay, I know.
Thank you.
I'd just like to let you know, Assistant Chief Brode watches CSI.
We'll, we'll talk.
Thank you, Chief.
I need a...
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
CSI. Meeting adjourned, thank you for coming.
Don't leave, I'd like to get a group picture just for my, my...